Good evening, this is the Warren Select Board for Thursday, October 23rd. It's 6:00 PM. We are going through cable TV, probably YouTube, live streaming. If anyone is recording, please let us know. Can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get started, we have a moment of silence for a few individuals here. Mark Karen, former state rep who lived in Warren and was serving on the housing board. Nola Reynolds was a Warren resident. And Ken Pratt, former Warren resident, but made a lot of contributions to the... All right, first up is a presentation by Barbara Larkin from the Warren Public Library on the 150 Years of Service Celebration to the Warren community with a kickoff anniversary party set for January, Saturday, January 17th, 4:00 to 6:00 PM.
Correct. I'm Barbara Larkin, and I'm representing the Warren Public Library and the Board of Trustees. And I've come to formally invite you all to the 150th celebration. We're extremely excited about this, and we've been had, we've done a great deal of planning already. And our kickoff will be, as you said, January 17th, which is a Saturday, 4:00 to 6:00 PM. This is the day when the Warren Library was incorporated 150 years ago. So that is why we're having our celebration on that date. We have a number of speakers that are lined up over the next year. If you might remember the townspeople graciously, in our budget, we have $2,000 that came from the town money that we are using for speakers, for our celebration, for a variety of events. Just some of them. And they, we've got almost one a month for the, in the next, starting in January. In February, there will be a speaker about a young woman whose diary we have, who was 16 in 1875 in Warren. Judith Black, who is a Lucy Stone specialist, will be giving a talk in March, close to Lucy Stone's birthday, which was March 8th. Diane Edchcombe is doing a children's program in May or June. Ed Landigan is doing a program on General Joseph Warren in April. Jeff Robbins is doing a program in May or June on Warren's Industries. So we have a lot of things lined up that are, most of which are historical related, but also have some things for families and friends. And in addition, we have a, we hope to get a grant from the Cultural Council for a children's program called Eyes on Owls in July. And so we've got lots and lots of things lined up, and it's gonna be a great time. And we're, we just hope that you will all be there. We've invited our state representative and senators. And Goldie, a former state senator, will be getting citations from, from, you know, the government. And so, have a big cake, and it'll be really lots of fun. So that's why I'm here, just to invite you all. You'll be getting formal invitations, but the whole town will be invited as well.
Okay.
So, there we are.
So, let us know, like, when each one's coming up? Give us, like, three weeks, notice ahead of time, we can mention it in the meeting?
That's wonderful, yeah. We have to finalize, some of these dates do need to be finalized. We're, we're working on that, and as soon as we do that, we'll have a, you know, a whole roster of programs and events, and we'll get it to you. That would be great to mention at the meeting. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Anybody else?
Thank you very much, and thank you for everything you're doing with the library. It's very, very good. You guys get some good programs going on. We've been to many of them, and it's always impressive.
It's really a great place over there. I mean, we were just having a meeting this afternoon, and it's just, it's just sort of bustling. There's kids in the corner in the children's area, there's a knitting room going on, there are young teenagers in the young adult section upstairs, and somebody on the computer. So, you know, it's always busy, it's really good.
Very good, good to see.
Yeah, we really...
Good job.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
See you, Karen.
All right, so, at this point, if there's no objection, I'd like to move the discussion on Scott Urban, the incoming chief plant operator for the wastewater treatment plant, up. If you're okay. He can take off. So we're gonna do a discussion on wage authorization for Scott Urban, incoming chief plant operator at the wastewater treatment plant to start a Grade A Step 7 on the Wage Classification Plan. So...
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you this evening for putting this on the agenda. In your cactus this evening, you'll see there is a resume as well as an offer letter made out to Scott Urban. Myself and the Chair of the Sewer Commissioners met and interviewed Scott about a week or two ago, and we were really impressed with this young gentleman's credentials. He is currently working for the Holyoke Wastewater Treatment Plant, which is managed by Viola. And he's looking to get into municipality work. He currently holds a Grade 7 license, which is even a higher license than our previous chief operator. And so, he has about eight years of experience working in the wastewater treatment plant field. He has a college background in environmental science. He lives locally in Belchertown, and he's excited to take on challenges. He certainly has a lot of energy behind him. And so, we are really excited about having Scott here. And I, and I know that the Sewer Commissioners met today to officially appoint him. They are the appointing authority. The Board of Selectment is the authority when it comes to wages. So, this is a wage authorization at a Step 7. But I think based on his years of experience, as well as his credentials, certifications, this wage authorization would be recommended. So, I know Travis is here this evening, I'm sure he can attest to, you know, what had transpired to lead us to this point.
Yeah, you're on.
Yeah, you're on that committee now, too.
Yeah. So, yeah, we interviewed Scott, so we had to fill the chief operator position at the treatment plant. So, Scott, you know, sent us his resume, he's highly qualified. Saw a grade that he has licensed and hired than what's needed for our plant, along with additional, like, licensing licenses, I believe, of, like, storm drains and...
The election license.
Which, you know, we had a discussion, might be useful, like, would the storm drains always get clogged up? So, you know, we got a lot going on at the plant, it's an aging building. A lot of things need to be worked on, so it's great we have somebody, you know, that's young and willing to put the work forward and try to get the plant back up in shape. So, with that, you know, we discussed and felt it was appropriate to hire at the higher step on wage scale.
Scott, you wanna say anything?
Yeah, nice to meet you guys, thanks for having me. I'm excited to, you know, tend to the plant and work with Zach. He looks, seems like a great guy. Jeff, is he a laborer? Seems like a nice fellow as well. I'm excited for the new opportunity.
Great, yeah. Lot of good stuff to do there, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I've got a couple. So, I've always pushed the needs for wastewater operators and how people wanna get into a career. This is something that a lot of communities are looking to have. And not many people wanna do this job. It's, it's kind of like a, a job that, it's a really good job, but nobody knows is there and available to them. So, it's awesome that, you know, people get into this. And thank you very much for taking that career path. It's definitely needed within communities. My other question is, go through your resume here. One thing that caught my eye is Operations Challenge from July 2019 to the present, referred to as the Wastewater Olympics, how it showcased the wastewater industry.
Yep, yep, I get that question a lot.
Now, what is that?
So, it's a, it's a four-member team, and there's a process event, which is like, you know, going through different types of scenarios, like, process challenges that plants may have that, you know, people in the field have formed. There's a safety event where you're actually rescuing a dummy out of a confined space, a manhole, because he succumbed to H2S gas. So part of the challenge is to retrieve him safely and finish the job that he had started. There's a maintenance event where you're pulling a pump out of a wet well and repairing the pump. There's a lab event where you're doing laboratory procedures. And there's a collections event where you're actually cutting a piece of 8-inch PVC pipe, and you're doing a new tap, which is then, you know, the service to the house of the building, or, you know, industrial service type of connection.
So confined, confined spaces rescues, do you have ASWAP courses?
I don't have ASWAP per se, but through Viola, I've done, you know, we do trainings with, you know, gas meters and entering confined spaces with, you know, retrieval equipment, and...
Tripod, very good.
Tripod, exactly, yep. Something that the fire department probably has done training with, I'm guessing, but just that type of equipment. Yeah, it's a, it's a fun thing. It's, it's good to get people in the field and kind of showcase, you know, the wastewater industry. I've been to Chicago a few times for it, for a national event. And, yeah, it's really cool.
So you represent Warren.
So instead of say if anything happens, you have the ability to help participate in a rescue if you need to?
Yep, yep.
And you're good on training, you're good on, you know, as far as advocate for training for your people?
Yeah, at the current plant that I work at, I'm in charge of the safety program, you know, making sure all our new hires get their orientation training, even the veterans, you know, just keeping them up to date on, you know, confined space training, or it could be, you know, alert driving, just making sure when you're out driving a vehicle, you know, you, you know, you got your head on a swivel and looking out for everything, so...
We're big on training in our community to make sure everybody's set up to succeed and do their best. And we're always pushing the police department, fire department, everybody, even the town hall. We've done all kinds of, you know, CPR, AED, stop the bleed courses, Narcan, all those courses to make sure our personnel appear and getting them also job-specific training, too. So we're very big into training, and it's good to see that you support that and you, you would go forward with that type of atmosphere.
Yeah, once I get my feet on the ground, I'd like to maybe incorporate the police department or the fire department to come to the plant and do some type of training. You know, and friend ding a tank, guy goes down and get him out.
All right, good. All right, so... I'll make a motion, hold on, I need to go back to the front page here. I'll get this right. You only wanna do it once, all right? All right, make a motion to appoint Scott Urban as the chief plant operator at the wastewater treatment plant to start at a Grade A Step 7 on the Wage Classification Scale.
Second, all in favor? David Dufranai, which I have, I, motion passes. Congratulations, so... All right. Good job. All right.
I'll talk to you, Jay. Okay, thank you guys.
All right. Next up is Police Chief Monthly Report for August 2025.
Just there yet? Chief Law, how is everyone doing? New takes, I see? This is for August, so the month of August, Department logged 1,386 calls of service, investigated four felonies, had 75 incident reports, two undue arrests, four warrant arrests, 15 settlements, for a total of 21 arrests, zero PCs, zero AR, two non-arrests, 110 motor vehicles stopped, 78 citations, and eight home vehicle accidents. At first, I'd like to thank all the officers, the sergeant, and lieutenant for the dedication to the job. We've been down a guy since April. June, July, and August are always time, we see a lot of vacation time and open shifts. Everyone stepped up, made sure we had coverage. Most of them work solo, and they answered all the calls for service in morale, data, we see. So I appreciate all, everyone we have on the force. At the beginning of the month, Officer Gray attended a week-long close quarters battle, struck a course. This week long, of course, I allowed Officer Gray to train our department in building search and building clearing and other close quarters events. On the 6th, I attended the department head meeting put on by the Town Administrator, with all the department heads. On that same day, I attended my monthly home land security meeting. On the 7th, I assisted the Town Administrator and the town at 38 Elm Street for the eviction process. On the 12th, I met with my harker, Town Administrator for Fire Chief Loy, and we discussed the upcoming complex meeting that was on Saturday, September 27th. On August 19th and 20th, I attended the Central Mass Chiefs Conference in Garden. At this conference, we had classes on AI, cellphone investigations, and Bitcoin investigations. On the 25th and 26th, Officer Bell and I conducted Alice trainings at the high school. On the 25th, the training was a full training with all the new Claylog district employees. On the 26th, we met with all the district employees for an Alice and school safety overview. On the 20th and 29th, I attended two trainings while helping the school. On the 28th, topic was back to school safety, and topic on the 29th was SWAT exercises. And that was August.
Any questions?
You know, it's hard to see that he didn't have any protective custody's at all for a month.
Yeah.
Not on wood.
And you're preparing for a new vehicle for the upcoming town meeting?
Yes, yep, we had one on for, I know I was gone on vacation, I don't know if that was brought up yet with you guys, or...
Yeah.
Yep, so we had the aging vehicle. That one has been an issue since we had it. It was the first year of the hybrid. So we were weeks without it. Was, at first, Ford was fighting with Upfitter, saying it was an Upfitter problem, and Upfitter's like, we can't find a problem, because Ford was saying it was electrical, and come to find out, it was the transmission. And it's like, three or four computers inside the transmission for the hybrid system, and one of them were failing, so you don't know which one's failing, so you have to replace the whole transmission. So that was a couple-month-long process, so we had, we didn't have it for quite a bit. That's why it's, I believe, it's a 2000, if I remember correctly. Do you remember? 2001, I don't remember. But we had 24 years, so normally it's a three-year. It's at 100,000, that's why it's only coming up to 100,000 miles now. But right now, I think everybody in the, the column is on, because it's throwing, even though the tire pressure's perfect, it says tire pressure lights on, the check engine lights on because the charging system's failing for the hybrid battery, so, yeah, it's time for it to...
It's out of warranty?
Yeah, it's out, everything's out of warranty.
It's gotta cost probably too much money to fix.
Um, just, you're not just a mechanic anymore, it's gotta be a computer tech degree for it. And then, we also have a thing on because our laptops and, or tablets in the cars are now out of date, so they can't be operated to the new operating system, which then puts us out of compliance with CGIS, because the updates can't go onto the computer to operate.
So then, CGIS is really pushing all that right now?
Yeah, it's a safety issue with them, because obviously that's how the guys, when we see them out there, that's how they run everything inside the cars.
Yeah, they just did the upgrades to the whole system.
Yep.
And then you just interviewed three police officers this week?
Yes, we did, we had interviews this week. They're three good candidates, two of them are exceptional. We're doing backgrounds right now, I'm hoping to meet with, just for next week, to discuss the two we're doing backgrounds on, hopefully. We'll be putting, bringing someone forward to you shortly.
Very good.
Awesome.
Nice job, chief. All right, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, discussion of possible vote. I'm renewing with MIA, the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association for the Medex 2 with PDP product for the towns retirees and authorize the treasurer to sign said renewal.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, before you this evening is a memo from John Swistak, our treasurer. The Medex 2 is, is up for renewal. Our renewal period is, is just started. The contract renews January 1st of 2026 to December 31st of 2026. There is a, an increase of 11.73% over the current rates, and it is recommended to renew at this particular time for the retirees. This is just for the retirees. This is not for the, the current employees. This is only for retirees at this current rate.
Okay. And then she recommends going with this. Any questions?
Yeah, are we gonna start looking at another option here?
Yes.
So, it's been consistently going up. Like, I think it went up, was it 16% last year?
Yes, yes.
Well, it says 20 here.
20%?
Yeah. So, what we are planning on doing in the next coming up weeks is announcing a task force, as I said, at the annual town meeting to look at what are some of the potential options and some other alternatives to, to plans, to looking at the current plan to see if there's adjustments that could be made, that could be potentially some savings. So, we're gonna be announcing that very soon. I had one individual that I really wanted to see on the committee. Unfortunately, that, that individual moved away. She was in the insurance industry, so she would have been great. So, I, I am going to be making an announcement soon on that, to get that committee up and running and, and looking at this and recommending something by the next annual.
Okay. Is this a committee you could have people who aren't residents on? I could need somebody who's knowledgeable, you know, Palmer or Ritter or something.
Sure, sure.
Something to think about, right?
Yeah.
Although, yeah, it's a volunteer thing.
Right.
Not covered fast, but...
Start reaching out to other communities and see what they're doing, too.
Yeah.
And see, see if, you know, because they must be asking the same questions, because now we're, in two years, it went up 31%.
Oh, yeah? And insurance costs across the board have gone up for everybody, and they're gonna continue to go up.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow, yeah. Just, that's quite a bit of an increase.
Yeah. All right, so we need a motion on this to approve...
Don signing the renewal.
Okay. Wanna make a motion that had effect?
I'll make a motion to approve renewing with MIA, Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association for the Medex 2 with PDP product for the towns retirees and authorize the treasurer to sign said renewal.
Second, all in favor?
David Dufranai.
Which I have, I, motion passes. Review and discuss any special town meeting articles for the November 20th, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So this is a third updated draft. It's even a little bit newer than the one that was in your packet when you, you took it on, on Monday. So, the one that's currently in your packet right now has some recommended deposits into stabilization and into capital stabilization now that we have free cash certified. And the Warren articles are still being reviewed by the FinCom. The FinCom met this past Wednesday, however, they did not have a quorum, so they could not take any official action on any of the outstanding articles that they're looking to either make a recommendation on or not. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I still am waiting to hear back for, from council on Article 15. I know that the Chair had indicated whether or not there could be an open blanket, you know, date, just the month of June, as opposed to a specific day in June, to see if that's legal. And I'm, I'm waiting to hear back from Jeff on that. With regards to other articles, the FinCom is still looking at Article 20 and 21 from the fire department with regards to the provisions in the local acceptance of Mass General Law Chapter 32, Sections 4, 2B, and Section 4, 2B and 1/2, which regarding reserve police officers and firefighters buying back time from, I'm called firefighters, I should say, I'm called firefighters, buying back time in, 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 in that, in other communities. There is a, an opinion in the back of your, of your packet, the back of the warrant, from Tim Zesson. It's kind of complicated, but I, I can answer some questions if you have any. And these are the articles, there haven't been any new articles that have been added since the last time. I am checking with Jeff, who's gonna get back to me by the end of this week, on questions regarding the studies. There was questions whether or not that the proximity to the fire station, Station A, and the proximity to the river, whether or not there's either some wetlands issues or potential River, River Act, things that need to be determined on whether or not you could either build over there. So, I'm trying to sit now...
Yeah, they cleared that, because in her opinion, it's already degraded.
What's that?
That area, because you have a basketball court there, with a bunch of basketball. So, I mean, how can you make it worse?
Right, 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 right. But they were concerned about the proximity to also the river, to what you potentially could build there. And Jeff was gonna look at to see whether or not, you know, how, how far away they had to be, or whatever have you. So that, that was that concern. And then there was another concern about the Cornerstone Bank Building, that there was chatter going around whether or not that's in a floodplain. And so, that has to be looked at. You certainly know a lot...
About what town it is now.
Well, yeah.
We have to, we have to...
So you're...
You put photos of the 1938 hurricane.
Right, so you don't wanna conduct a study to find out that you can't build there anymore?
Or, or you can't...
You could have answered the question easily, like, in 10 minutes.
Right, so I, I'm trying to check with Jeff to do some back work, back channeling, see if he can get me that information before we, you know, wheel this out into an article asking the townspeople for money.
Well, that came, that question came up with Levy. We're starting to look into that with the Corps of Engineers, saying that the floodplain is actually extended out now. And that we have to reevaluate that, because now, like, the tracks and all that stuff's in the floodplain and all that area now. So, it's all low-lying land.
And I forgot, they changed the standard. They used to measure like how high it would go, but now I think they measure how far.
Yeah.
So, and it makes a big difference. Whatever the, however it changed, it makes a huge difference.
So I posed those questions to, to Jeff. He's supposed to email me back something in writing, so we have something concrete.
Okay, so let's say we can't do the bank building because of its, it's in a floodplain. I say we keep it on here and then cancel it, have the meeting. So the people understand that we were trying to do this? So the people understand that we were trying to do this and that we can't, and we can say why? Because if we just take it off, it's like no one will understand what happened.
Okay, yeah.
There's, you know, it's kind of like we left everybody in the dark after talking about it at the meeting. So I'd rather make a motion, we're gonna take this off because of X, Y, Z.
You really need to have the facts.
Yeah.
Once you get the facts, then you can go forward with the stuff.
Yeah. So, yeah, we just need some solid facts. We're gonna do that.
And that's what I've asked Jeff for.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't the determination of floodplains come from FEMA?
Well, he's gonna look at the FEMA maps.
Well, I thought those had to be updated because they were updated the last time they did and they were redoing them all.
I'm not sure.
I know that came up. When the levy thing happened, it was like, we got to dump all this information on top of us and concerns. And the Corps of Engineers were bringing us a lot of information, how floodplains will be unaffected and everything else and.
Well, okay.
Honestly, half our towns built in the floodplain now, according to that.
I'll, I'll ask Joyce to make it home. She may say, yeah. So, I mean, you still probably might just.
Yeah.
Last but ask.
Sure.
I don't text her because then it becomes a broken media law issue. I was all set to text.
Come on, yeah.
Then I'm like, oh, no, I don't think.
Let's do it, just get done with.
Okay, so a couple of questions.
Are you all set?
Yes. Okay. First of all, the $60,000 for the lights?
Yep.
What was, do we hear, do we know what Westbrook Field statuses?
We do not.
Okay. And what if they don't approve any money?
Then it would sit there and then it would have to get repurposed at a later, at a later date and later town meeting.
Repurposed by who?
By us.
By an article.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just with the understanding that it's not going to the school where they can repurpose it or something else, that it stays, it goes back to.
It's specific, it's, 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 these accounts are set up specifically how the article is written.
Okay, and there's no way that money could leak out the way this is written?
Right, correct.
All right.
It would only be for that intended purpose.
Okay.
Now, my understanding was this is not necessary at all. Because it was brought to my attention that if the town light, the lights are left on in the field, it falls into a different category and the town can claim them and essentially get it for free through a grant process. And that was brought to me by, by some residents saying, why don't we just do it this way? And apparently that was brought to Mr. Duff that.
No, we can mention that.
That that can be done and if we just leave them on, we can just claim them and use it as a security thing because you could say, well, it's security for the field, we don't want people going on the field, we don't want people going to the new, you know, concession stand, we don't want any illicit activity going on in the dark over there. So we leave the lights on, they claim them, and it becomes a deduction now, and they switch over the LEDs. So we replace them all with LEDs and we get the reduction, so it costs nothing to the town. And it's like, why don't we explore that? I can understand doing this, but if we can do it for free, let's do it.
So when Mr. Duff appeared before the Capital Planning Commission Committee, he mentioned that, but he didn't think, first of all, they don't, right now, they don't use the lights obviously that much. And for some reason, I don't remember his wording, but he made it sound like he didn't wanna do that or it wasn't an option. Obviously, it's an option, you just don't turn the.
Well, you don't turn it off. And it makes more sense because if you, it, it makes no sense to me, the longer you run them, you get them free. That, that concept doesn't make, make sense to me, but. It is what it is. If you turn them on, leave them on, we get it for free.
But maybe.
Turn it on!
Maybe we'll turn them off.
Maybe the cost of running them.
It could be.
Is higher than just purchasing them?
Yeah, that's, I mean, it would be more electricity, but.
My understanding, that was all a deduction. They, the, the green energy national grid replaces the balls and they replace them all for LED and they just get left on. And at that point, you write them off as a free thing. I'm like, I think it's something we need to look more into because, and that was brought to me by residents and they brought it to Mr. Duff and they were pretty avid about, like, this is a thing, why aren't we doing this? So.
Okay.
Should be something we, we look into. I don't know if you could.
Yeah, could you try them?
Sure.
And explore that. Because if we can get the lights for free and all we gotta do is leave them on, that helps the chief because nobody's gonna be doing anything with this bright light over there. And, you know, it's better. And then people can use the trap longer too. You know, if somebody wants to walk during the night, they can walk during the night. They don't have to worry about the lights being on.
Yeah.
I will check with Steve tomorrow.
Okay, all right, great.
Now, if he says that's not an option, do you wanna leave the article on?
I'd leave it on until now, but why isn't it an option? Would be my question. What makes it not an option? The fact that you don't wanna leave the lights on or it's, we don't qualify for that program? And how do we not qualify for that program? Is my question.
Well, no, he did mention that we didn't because we don't leave them on. So the implication was if we left them on, we were qualified.
Right.
But he didn't wanna leave them on. But I don't know that we exactly got the reason, so, yeah, I know, it's a weird.
If you concede the town $90,000 just to leave the lights on, leave on.
Right. So if the electricity is $120,000, then you wouldn't do it. But if the electricity's 10 grand or 20 grand, then it's worth it. I mean, just figure your, you know, your return on that money, so.
And they'll get like, they'll, they'll be all LED too, so it's gonna be a lot cheaper to run it too.
Yeah, in the future, absolutely, yeah. Okay, the other question I had was, are we good with this? With the lights one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm just trying to find, okay, 14. I reworded 14 to take out the, the language about the lawsuit.
I did. We can, it was recommended that we mention it in oral discussion at.
Not in the article.
Yeah, not in the article, not in here.
This is what it uses.
Yeah, I was kind of concerned about that too because it's like, it looks like you're.
We can, it's what it was recommended.
You're, you're identifying an individual's.
Yeah, yeah.
But there's nothing wrong with that.
No, no, but it's also kind of bad form. There we are. It's not exactly the best thing to do in either.
Yeah. Okay. I think I'm all set with this. How about you?
I, I have a question about Article 20.
20.
So we're talking about reserve firefighters here. Why are we including reserve police officers in here if we don't have reserve police officers anymore?
So the legislation, the local acceptance, you're accepting a provision of Mass General Law, so it's not just.
Just copy of the provision?
Correct. We, we can't change the provision. So a reserve police officer is, you know, part-time, so.
Okay. Yeah, you just take the language as it is, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Yeah, so say in that case, you get the collective bargaining that would need to be done with the police unit because, you know, including them in.
Okay, with anything else, you know, it is what it is. So what's, what's next with this warrant?
So the FinCom is going to be meeting on next Wednesday at 2:00. And we are going to be going through it one last time. They're gonna be making their final votes and recommendations at that time. And then I would, the board had already determined when we opened the warrant to close the warrant on October 30th. So I realize we won't have a meeting again before then, so I would need the board members to come in and sign the warrant next week after the FinCom has done their final review.
Okay. All right, what do you think? Are you okay with that or do you wanna do a?
Well, we could decide if we wanna have a quick meeting if there are.
We should have a quick meeting for it because if anything changes within the article, FinCom recommends a change.
Yeah.
I don't wanna blanket say, yes, we're good and whatever FinCom agrees because then we're handing.
Yeah.
The authority over to FinCom to make a decision on the articles.
Okay.
And their advisory and we ultimately do loans once again.
Yeah.
So we could have a quick meeting next.
See, necessary, it's in there, it's in there.
I would, well, let's see what, if, if nothing really changes, they just say yea or nay on an article, then we're probably okay, but let's see what happens.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. If anything changes, then we would.
If anything changes, then we definitely.
Okay.
So, okay. All righty. So now we're down to number six, discussion with a possible vote to appoint Copola and Copola as special town council for tax title properties.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So I discovered through the process of going through tax title work that as part of the process, the town has engaged with Copola and Copola for some time. And it doesn't appear as though that they were ever appointed as special town council to handle tax title possessions. The appointment of council is an authorization that is given by the board to select them. So I feel as though that, that an authorization should be reviewed and voted on by the board. Copola and Copola has a vast experience in tax title properties. They are well-equipped to handle the towns foreclosed and tax possession properties and tax title properties. They are experts in the field and I, I don't have any issues working with them on this and neither does the treasurer.
So how long do we appoint KP and Myrick?
Usually on a yearly basis.
Okay, so we should do the same here?
Right.
Okay. Because there's no chairman here, so. All right. I'm, I'm good with this. I mean, they seem like, and they seem kind of inexpensive.
Give them a chance.
Inexpensive compared to like.
And they, they specialize in tax title.
Yeah, okay.
And these have been moving pretty quick.
Yeah.
Using them, so.
Yeah.
I haven't had any issues.
Yep. All right.
I'll make a motion to appoint Copola and Copola as special town council for tax title properties.
For one year.
For a period of one year.
Second, all in favor?
David Dufranay.
Richa Hacker, aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, request from the town administrator to attend and pay for costs associated with attending Connect 351, the M, MMA, is it MBA? MMA.
MMA, yeah.
Oh, MMA, Annual Trade Show in Boston, January 22nd, 23rd, and 24th.
That says MIA.
MIA is part of the MMA.
Yeah.
That's like their insurance arm.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'm gonna go also.
I don't know, I'm going on that.
Sure.
I guess I'm, I'm getting old.
All right, so there's no objections, it's a good trade show, there's plenty of people to meet and talk to and vendors to meet and things to learn, so.
It's very valuable.
So if you wanna do a motion?
See, Boston.
Boston, yeah.
We have to do a motion for that one. You just.
You're just authorizing it to vermeat go in in expensive.
Okay, yeah, sure, do a motion for it. All right.
Well, then again.
Thank you for bringing that all that down.
All right. Warrants and bills.
Do you wanna do the meeting minutes? Why aren't we doing the warrants and bills before the meeting?
You guys have a rule, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's been rushed. Why do these things not work? Uh, no.
I just put them up front so they're easy to. Apparently not.
Yeah, I'm interested, they should go under.
It should go under nine, well, where, where was that? Warrants and bills, no nine. All right. Make a motion to pay the following warrants, payroll 08-26 for $120,999.72.
Uh, second, all in favor?
David Dufranay.
Richa Hacker, aye, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to pay the following bills, Modern Pass $117, Vanpool $293.49, SBA Structures $1,806.47, Pine Ridge Technologies $493.90, N-Trade for $3,265.86, AT&amp;T for $10.84, Security and Fire Integrations LLC for $755, Weston and Sampson Engineers for $30,000, Masters Telecom for $93.79, PDAC Solutions for $649, Copola and Copola for $3,052.50.
Second, all in favor?
David Dufranay.
Richa Hacker, aye, motion passes? So did you pay any of these under the new scheme we set up?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're all on time.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no rush, okay. All right, minutes.
Is that under tab nine?
Seven. That's why I put the attachment number.
Yeah, I think we got a.
Seven next to it.
Yeah, I think we, it'd be okay to have empty tabs, I think.
Okay, I'll do that, go on.
Yeah. Because I know I'm, I'm just looking at.
I'm looking at the number, I'm not looking at the.
The attachment number, yeah. And then you can throw warrants and bills, like in this case, under eight, tab eight, that would be easier. The only thing I'll add is number eight, you might wanna mention that we changed the, well, our question has been, the one for the lights from 100,000 to 60,000. You could probably get rid of me correcting grammatical errors because that probably doesn't really matter, right? But the 60, from 100 to 60 is a bigger deal.
That was article number.
You're slacking.
I'm waiting. Well, you know. I don't know what our, well, see, they didn't have numbers back then. Jim, you know, I can remember.
No, they weren't numbered back then. So we've said, we saved the numbering for last. So you just call.
Call the school lights article from 100 to 60,000. I think that was really the only substantive change we made.
To follow up that with that real quick, did Mr. Duff talk to Westbrook Field yet?
Uh, I know he said he was going to, I don't think he's, I don't know if he's had the opportunity to do that yet, but.
The other thing is we added the article for the new meeting date.
Okay.
Or, or to move in the meeting day. Anything else?
We're good.
Okay. I think that was it. All right. Do we make a motion?
I, I will. I'll make a motion to approve the warrant, approve the meeting minutes from October 16th, 2025.
Second.
As amended, yeah.
Okay, second, all in favor?
David Dufranay.
Richa Hacker, aye, motion carries. Town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have a couple of things to report to you this evening. Number one. Number one, our fire department ambulance is going to be in service for some in-service work at the garage. So, we were able, the fire chief was able to work out a loaner vehicle, a loaner ambulance from Sturbridge Fire. So, I want the people in the community to understand there's nothing happening to our ambulance. It wasn't in an accident. It was simply some mechanical work that is needed to be completed under warranty because the warranty is going to be expiring soon and the chief wants to get it in. We want, we made arrangements to borrow Sturbridge's backup ambulance for at least 30 days. We've notified Maya and our insurance company of that. And the chief's worked it out with Sturbridge. So, we want to also thank Sturbridge Fire for the loaner. So, I just wanted to let the board and the public know that. As the police chief mentioned, we interviewed three great candidates this week for the open patrol, police patrol vacancy officer's position. We're hopeful that the chief is moving forward with background checks on two individuals. We're hopeful that one individual will be emerging from that field and hopefully will be in front of the board very soon. As I mentioned previously, the finance committee met. I did meet with them this week. They are working on a meeting next week and working, going through with a warrant. We're hopeful that their work can be completed next Wednesday. This past week, unfortunately, they did not have a quorum, so they couldn't act on anything. I'm very pleased to report to the board and to the public that free cash has been certified by the Department of Revenue. That certification came last night, yesterday afternoon. And I really want to commend the finance team, our town accountant, everybody involved on, Jackie, Carrie, everybody, assessors, all the hard work that they did to make that happen and to get the reports in. We were certified yesterday afternoon for a total of $1,080,621 for fiscal year '26 free cash. You know, it was a long process that the finance team had to go through to get that done, and I really appreciate their hard work and their dedication. I do want to signal to the board that the Department of Revenue reduced warrants free cash amount because Chapter 90 highway reimbursements were not submitted to the state in a timely manner as requested. That submittal is due on September 30th of this year. It was not submitted, it still hasn't been submitted. I know myself and the accountant had a couple of different conversations with the highway department, with Jeremy and Shelley. They are working on it, but it still has not been submitted as of yet. And so, the state did reduce our free cash position by that amount. We would have had an additional $314,000 available to us to work and to put into savings or to work on capital projects. So, I did want to bring that to the board's attention. We are also, we got news just yesterday as well that we received our, we were successful in our CDPG grant that was put together. We received $1,050,000 in a total award. Now, a portion of that award is going to go to Middlebury because we teamed up with Middlebury on the submittal of our application this year. So, we're not going to get the full $1,050,000. We will get probably somewhere around $950,000 because their study is somewhere around 100 grand or a little less than 100 grand for the study that they submitted as part of our application. So, that particular award, we're going to be handling the construction on Hillside Avenue, that big project. So, that's going to do water sewer drainage, street and sidewalk services. And that will complete the school street neighborhood. So, we're going to finish that Hillside Avenue piece. That's construction. We're also going to be doing the planning phase and planning study on the infrastructure for the Washington Street neighborhood. That particular neighborhood over there, we're going to start with planning study and infrastructure study in that neighborhood. That will be another application or another project that's funded under this grant. And then finally, under this grant, we're also going to do an engineering designing study for the Summer Street and as in West Warren. So, we're really excited that we were awarded this by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. We are elated that, you know, we got everything that we asked for in today's climate. And so, we're eager to get going on those projects. Also this week, I participated in a STAM Fall Meeting, Small Town Administrators Association meeting up in Berners-Sten, Mass, up past Greenfield today. I mean, not today, on Wednesday. And we met with the Department of Revenue. Deb Wagner was there answering questions about year-end closeouts and some of the new processes and different things to that nature. We had risk managers there for Maya as well as a pretty experienced building maintenance advisor on how to upkeep on some of the properties and building maintenance and deferred maintenance that has been happening on a lot of communities. So, it was good to see some of my cohorts over there and to interact with them and to learn some of the upcoming new policies that are going to be put out by the Department of Revenue and Maya. And then finally, we're preparing for the auction, the upcoming auction that's coming up on November 18th. So, we are working with Sullivan and Sullivan. Sullivan Sullivan is going to be on site on Monday. They're going to be meeting with myself and the treasurer and the tax collector on some of the properties and going over those lists. I'd like to sit down with you, Rich, sometime, you know, in the next coming up weeks, just to go over some pricing and different things with you. And then they're going to talk about some of the advertising that they're going to be doing, as well as they wanted to kind of get a gauge and look at the space that they're going to hold the auction in, making sure everything is suitable. One of the things that, you know, a couple of the things that I would recommend that the board may want to consider is on the day of the auction that we have a porta potty available outside of the Shepherd Gym that we can make available. I would like to procure that for the day. And then obviously, we would like to really do some additional advertising. And we were thinking about purchasing some airtime on one of the local radio stations at $12 a spot, 25 spots, $300 to put it out on Classic Hits, Classic Hits 97.7 to try to, you know, a week prior to the sale of Dryden, draw up some additional...
Is that WA RV?
Yes, yeah. Some additional...
We can write that off and put that in the...
Yeah.
As far as like...
I mean, it's only 300 blocks, I think.
Yeah, yeah, why not?
If the board's okay with it.
Yeah. Are you doing newspaper advertising?
They are, they are, they are. This would be something above and beyond that we would be responsible for.
Okay, yeah, for $300. Okay. Sorry.
Is that it? Are you done?
Who wants to see the BG, who is it joined with what now?
Middlebury?
Okay. Or Milbury?
Middlebury, 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 I'm sorry, Middlebury.
Yeah. Okay. Parsons, Palace?
I'm not happy about the $300,000 that we lost out on for now. Hopefully, we can recover that paperwork supply soon. But are you getting a reason why he hasn't gotten his paperwork in?
I had a conversation with Jeremy today and he had indicated that Shelley was out last week and the week before. And he's been, you know, really busy with some projects that are going on, but...
Or the week before that.
Well, or again, I think like we talked about, if he needs, if somebody else can help him do that, I mean, we should, you know, I don't know.
He has people, he just, he's managed those people. And he has a job opening that he still hasn't hired for in that department, which he probably should fill that because if he's out there doing all these jobs himself instead of having another guy out there doing it, it's a management issue. And that's a concern because we should not be losing out on $300,000 in this town because of somebody not making a deadline. That's unacceptable in every aspect. And I'm quite pissed off by that. Did you get a chance to talk to him?
No, I didn't, no. I can call him, I just, yeah.
Now, you're going to do it or you want me to do it?
I'll call him.
All right.
And that's my report.
Okay.
Thank you. And we do have a chance of getting that money back if we can get this submitted.
I had talked to DOR and they indicated to me that if, if the paperwork can be submitted in a timely manner the next, you know, month or so, you know, I would like sooner. You know, then I can, I can, I can work with the state to see if I can get a recertification.
Okay, all right.
I'd definitely work on that because that's, that can mean several things going forward for the committee. It's money that we're owed somewhat.
Yeah.
And for a small town like us to take a hit on $300,000, that is not acceptable at all. And I would definitely be hot and heavy on that issue until it gets done. Because, you know, if you're at week three of your month, that's completely unacceptable. That should be done this week, priority above everything else. That's it, you know? And hiring another person should become an issue too. We have these positions that we get voted into town because these departments say they need them and advocate for them. And the residents give them these positions. And then the departments don't even hire for them. And then they're saying, well, I'm too busy. That's unacceptable. You've got people, hire the person, make time, get your paperwork in, get it done. That's my stance on that. But yeah, this ain't going away. We should definitely get updates on this when it's submitted. I'd like to know when he submits it and gets it done with.
I'd ask him to give me the paperwork as soon as he's ready with it, whenever they're ready, whenever it's ready.
And my understanding, it's all online now?
This middle is for reimbursed, yeah, for reimbursed. I just need, I just need the actual paperwork so I can, you know, have, you know, have the Department of Revenue see that it's been signed off locally and that I can send it to them.
Okay. All right. All right. New business?
No, I'm good.
Old business?
Credit cards for the town?
The treasurer is working on, we just issued new credit cards for Lowe's, okay? And we revamped the Lowe's account. Then we're going to start looking at what we can do for a regular type of card.
Okay. So, a little bit of progress?
A little progress.
Okay, good. I'm thinking the flags should be coming down soon that are up on the poles. They have to be filthy, right? I mean, after all, summer.
I'd get them down probably first week in November.
Yeah.
In that timeframe before, before we start seeing the winter weather.
Yeah, they're going to get the streets...
Because the last thing you want is salt kicking up on them. Yeah, and getting, or plows hitting them.
Yeah. Let's just, yeah, just prevent a storm.
We could save them until spring and then put them up again.
Can we throw them in the washing machine?
No.
Oh, how do you clean them?
I don't think you do.
You don't? Really? Okay.
They fade naturally and, you know, they're fine. It's, they get rained on, they should be under a light in the rain, but...
Yeah, they should be.
But, you know, they get rained on and it cleans them up, you know? And when they become unserviceable, we hold a ceremony and decommission them properly.
Yeah, get them remounted, okay.
Which is something that the Veterans Council should probably be looking at soon. Or at some point in the future because it's been a while since we had flag retirement, so.
Wow, at least three years maybe.
Since Becky. Yeah, Becky and Rich. Yeah, they're the ones that ran it. That's the last time I think it's done.
I do want to report to the board that we do have a new flag and a new POW flag at the Shepherd Building. I have Griffin and Mike worked on that. And we had to get a new cord for the flagpole. And we got new cord and it's currently up there.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Correspondents? No correspondents? You have any correspondents?
No, just the discussion that I talked about before about the lights.
Oh, yeah, okay. Any comments or concerns?
No, no, I made my comments.
I do not have any, any from the public. Joe?
Joe, I'm glad, President. I heard on the news the other night that the governor is going to release, I think she said, $217 million in grants to the cities and towns of Massachusetts.
Excellent. Do you know what it covers?
She didn't say when.
Or what it covers, like what is it used for?
She didn't say, it's just $217 million grants.
All right.
And that could be for a wide variety of things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And she didn't say when. And the other thing, I, you just commented on fight retirement ceremony. Don't the Boy Scouts do that?
I don't know. We don't even have a Boy Scout troop in town. We don't have one anymore, do we? No, no.
So, it was the Veterans Council that did it.
It was Veterans, yeah.
Three-ish years ago. And I don't know when it was done before that. Probably, I think there was like a pretty big backlog of flags.
Yeah, there was a lot of them. Because I know we cleaned a lot of them out of the building that were lying around in pretty bad condition. Ones that we've had on the flagpole over the years and stuff.
Well, not only that, but so like all the ones that marked veterans created in the cemetery.
All those are pretty much, you get to replace those every year because those are inexpensive flags that are, you get to dispose of properly in a ceremony. It's a pileup. Yeah. And the last time we did that, we probably got a few boxes that was right now that need to be disposed of properly because we haven't done it in several years.
All right. Any other comments or concerns? All right. Our next meeting is November 6th at 6:00 PM.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
David DeFrana.
Richi Hacker, aye. We are adjourned. All right, everybody.